What's up?
The, uh...
She pointed the mortgage to the highway.
Right, because on the side of this bucket, it was zero. And we have the time in the bucket that one is zero. I'm pretty sure. But she didn't find out until after that, right? I don't have my other one out here with me. Okay. Are these posted? Yes, they are. Thank you.
It was zero in the line you showed me because she had it here under local sources.
Right, right. On the highway.
Yep.
Okay, she can't, she can't sort of be telling how she, the time of the budget was. She's showing that this was in the general somewhere there wasn't one that she had it in the VA fund. It's still the same amount, but it's misrepresentation of what was happening.
I forgot what the, you told me about the health officer. What line is that supposed to be?
These papers should be under the, um, public safety line, which I think is where the dog was catching. I had a hope that's not sure where he should be, but probably on the public safety.
Okay.
I would imagine that's where he goes. I'll have to check that.
Would you like to call the meeting to orbit stage? Please stand before the meeting. Let's all listen to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God and the reasonable liberty and justice for all. Um, welcome everybody to primary some workover speaking for a public term for preliminary budget. And we will answer questions that pertain to preliminary budget this evening. Thank you. Can we please have a full call?
Sure. Supervisor Shekla.
Here.
Consul Manita.
Here.
Consulman Galusha.
Here.
Consulman Brown.
Here.
Consulman Harris.
Yes.
All right, so we'll open the floor up. We'll take questions from the public this evening. Again, this is a full-fledged committee meeting meeting, it's a public hearing. And I will start with Mr. Carr and then we'll go across and around and to the back. Thank you. Thank you. Mrs. Huber? Do you have any comments?
Not yet.
Okay. Mrs. Debbie?
Uh, did you and Randy have that conference call that you talked about?
Um, no, we did not because the conference call, when I called the comptroller's office, uh, she stated that he, Mr. Belusha, had sent an email stating that he wasn't available. He didn't have time, so she did not...
I didn't hear the last part.
They stated that Mr. Belusha sent an email stating he did not have the time and they would not schedule a, um, a meeting.
That, that is in fact not true. I never sent an email to that.
No, because you said last week that you had Thursday and Friday available, so that was in excess.
Every day, but I'm retired.
All right, so can we get on the, the actual...
Yeah, but that was part of the, part of the budget, so if you didn't take the time to do it, it makes a difference. Um, would you, so I can say anything or just questions?
Uh, it's anything you want to question or comment on in regards to the preliminary budget for 2021?
Okay. Um, it was my understanding that counting was asking a 20% reduction, but I see that we have another raise in this budget. And, uh, between, on the highway, the revenues dropped 20 and the expenses went 77. That's $100,000 difference rounding it off. And since Seaman has been controlling the budget for the last few years, it's raised a dollar for per thousand. If you have $100,000, that's $100 for all the people. So I think this budget is raking the taxpayers. I don't think it's right.
Thank you, Mary.
You're welcome.
Joyce, do you have something you'd like to say? That is your call. All right. Um, we're going to go back. Um, Shirley, do you have anything you'd like to comment on?
No. Not right at this time.
Thank you. No? Do you have anything you'd like to say? Don?
No.
Um, all right. Well, I was going to go to, and then to you. Do you have anything you'd like to say or not?
I don't think they know your question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, I don't know. About a senior moment, you give me, Pat, do you have anything you'd like to say?
No.
No? Deb?
Um, the 98,249 as in unextended balance for highway, that is, actually, that was a long front of highway to the general fund. And that is his, the highway's current money that was taken from his revenue this year. It should have been deferred revenue coming back to them at the end of this year and not used as a spent balance.
We have to take advantage of current 2021 taxes and that is for the comptroller's office. But not on the highway. It's the $98,000 was from the highway. The highway is getting the money back. That is not concerned. All right? Everybody seems to be upset and concerned that the highway is not getting this money back. They are getting this money back.
But it's being used to reduce.
We have to reduce the taxes because it was raised with the intent of going to the highway last year and there was no tax cap override done last year. So the taxes were over $98,249.
This is not currently the handle of the override, the excess override.
Well, excuse me, but this is how I was told to handle it and this is what I need to do. Thank you. It may be different in chunks of town, but this is how I was told to do it.
That's, to the people who have this. What is the tax cap?
The tax cap right now is 2.45%.
No, no, it was a dollar amount.
Well, if you do, um, 2.45 times a thousand, about $2.45.
I, I think...
No, the dollar amount, 600, 700?
Oh, I'm sorry. I, um, to be raised in taxes or... It's $206,879.
The, the cap itself.
There, the tax cap has overrode.
She's asking for what the levy limit is.
The levy limit? Okay, go ahead.
It is, this year is 70, 728,080. But we've already have 98,249 in the bank, so we should be raising 98,249 less than that.
Is it 600 or something?
This budget does not do that.
It does. It brings it down.
629, I think it is?
It brings it down to 642,670 on the highway department because that's where the money came from and that was where the money was raised for and intended to go.
Well, I don't mean just highway. The limit, the limit for the tax cap levy itself is 600 and something thousand dollars.
No, it was 700 and some odd thousand. Hold on.
It is 728,080 minus 98,249.
Right, and then 629 or something like that?
But it is not...
It's 812,859 and then you take the 98,249 from it and you take the base, the tax-based growth factor, which is 1.0032, and you deduct from that also the allowed levy growth factor, which is 1.0156, and it comes to 728,080. Then you come on down here and you reduce from the 7, uh, 728,080, um, excuse me, add to that rather, the 98,249, which is 836,710, which gives you a difference between the tax levy limit and proposed levy of 206,879.
I'm, I'm sorry. That, that is incorrect. The 700, 728,080 is the levy limit and we're supposed to subtract the 98,249 because we already have that in the bank.
Correct.
This summary table is misleading, is not misleading.
No.
It actually, if you add up the totals of the revenue, the expanded balance, which is the 98,249, and the amount to be raised in taxes, 836,710, that's the total of the appropriation, 98,249.
I'm sorry, that's not correct. You take the appropriation, you deduct the revenues, and then you deduct the 98,249.
The, the three, the three revenue sources have to total the appropriation balance.
No, 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 no. You take your appropriations, which is 1,195,432. You deduct from that your anticipated revenues, which is the...
I'm sorry. What was that first number?
The, I'm looking at the highway department because of the number of dollars.
I'm talking about on the summary table.
I'm on the summary table.
Okay. If you look at the totals at the bottom of the column.
Yes, the 1,824,108,000.
Yep. If you take the next three figures, you add them off.
No, 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 you deduct them.
Uh, okay. We're just trying to, this is different. If you add those three numbers, it matches the appropriations, correct?
I don't do it that way, so I'm not going to agree with you.
Okay, go through and subtract and you come to zero.
You could say...
The, the point that I'm making is that the 98,249 is supposed to be subtracted from the revenue that we need to raise this year. And it is not being in this budget. It is in addition to the amount being raised in the taxes.
No, it's not. I'm sorry, Debbie. I'm the one who prepared the taxes. I understand what I did and I conferred with the state comptroller's office on numerous occasions to make sure the way I was going at it is correct. This is, this is a correct summary. All right?
She's not right.
I'm telling you it is correct and I...
We can sit here and argue all night about it.
I'm not going to...
That's why you should have had that telephone call.
Your, your...
Thank you, Mary.
This budget, this budget proposes to raise 836,710, correct?
Yes.
And we already have 98,249 in the bank.
Mm-hmm.
You're going to spend both of those. That's how much money we're spending in taxes this year. There's no other way to look at it. It's just 98,249 we already have. It was raised last year.
To be deferred revenue, not deferred again. Thank you. If you take your appropriations, the 1,824,108, you subtract from that your anticipated revenues. Then you subtract from that your 98,249 and you come up with 836,710.
Correct.
Thank you.
That's how much you're going to raise in taxes?
That's correct.
And you already have 98,249 in the bank that you're going to spend in addition to that?
No, no, no. That money was raised last year in taxes and is being reduced by the 98,249 here. This is a correct way of doing it, Randy, but you know what? I've also been told what your idea for, and, and in your discussion, was also another way that we can approach this, but the end result will not be exactly the same. The end result here is there's no time to reduce the tax.
How much money in tax dollars are we going to spend this year?
Well, we're, uh, to raise in taxes.
Now, how much money are we...
We're going to take to spend 1,824,108. That's what our appropriations is.
Not including the other revenues, the other sources of revenue. I'm talking about property past. How much are we going to spend this year?
In the general fund? 166.
No. For our total budget? How much money in taxes are we going to spend out of, out of this budget?
You tell me, Randy, you've got this figured out.
It's right there in front of us.
I understand.
We're spending 836,710 and we're raising this year. Plus, plus, we're spending the 98,249 that we raised last year.
The 98,249 is going back into the highway. That is correct. I will not dispute that.
It's being spent in this year's budget.
That's correct because it was raised in last year's, uh, last year's taxes. It is being reduced by the taxes this year. The, this year's taxes are being reduced by the 98,249. Yes, it is. Because you've got your appropriations, you've got your revenues. You take your revenues from your appropriations and then you take your 98,249 from that and it comes up with to be raised in taxes, which is 836,710.
So in 2020, 98,249 highway money is that size?
That is correct.
But it's not being returned to them. It's being used in this year's budget to lower what they need.
It is being returned to them. But then how is it being also used here? It is being used because they didn't reduce, this was overage on the taxes last year. That's why it had to be put aside this year. Next year, in 2021, the 98,249 will be going back to the highway department in its entirety.
That was a loan. It was not their obligation.
Well, yeah, it kind of was their obligation because it was taxes, that was tax money that was raised last year with the anticipation of going towards the highway department so the highway department could utilize it for a truck or whatever necessities they had. But because they did not override the tax cap last year, the money had to be reduced this year in the 2021 taxes.
The only reason for that was because the board did not approve an override resolution.
I beg your pardon?
The only reason this happened at all was because that fighter board did not approve an override resolution and overrode the tax cap.
That was last year. I had no control over that. All I know is it has to come off of this year's taxes. It's coming off of this year's taxes once and it is going to the highway department so that they can utilize it for whatever, um, is necessary. It's, it's not, they're not losing it. And I don't know where the misnomer is, is people think that they're, they're losing it because they're not losing the money.
If they didn't have that, they'd be raising more property taxes to be in the same spot they would have been if that had never occurred.
If they had raised the taxes last year by the same amount of money and had approved the tax cap override, they would have still had an 18-point something increase in taxes last year. This year, if they had approved the tax cap override, we would have not had the 98,249 to reduce the taxes by.
So you are going over the cap and you have an override resolution?
We overrode the tax cap. Yes, we did. And it's been filed. And it's been received.
Mr. Neen agreed to it this year. He's run by different people.
Thank you, Mary. You're welcome. So, um, I am going to the back to Mrs. McGillraff.
Yeah, I just like to know, you say that you were told to have it handled by the department. What do you do? Who told you that?
I'm sorry, who told me to do what?
Who told you to have it handled?
I worked with the state comptroller's office in, in Glens Falls.
So, just to be fair, Deb, the 98,249 is actually included in the highway spending in the summary table. And if you add up the appropriations for highway, which comes to 1,195,432, that does include the 98,249. It, it is in the highway to be spent as highway money.
But then it's reduced 98,249 as well as the revenue.
That's your appropriations, so that's how much you're spending.
No, no, no. It's the, to be...
You're spending 1,195,432.
In the highway department.
In the highway department. And the revenue from the highway department is 454,513.
Yes.
You're spending that, plus you're spending 98,000.
No, you don't spend the revenue. You don't spend the revenue.
Then how are you going to cover your appropriations?
Your, it's reduced from your appropriations along with the 98,000.
You're planning to spend that amount of money. Where's that money coming from?
Bottom line is, is the town government is in what they call a revenue hole. And I'm sure you've heard it before, I know. Pat's heard it before. I don't think anybody else has heard it before. But that simply means that we do not bring in enough revenues to cover our expenses. So therefore, unfortunately, it's the taxpayer who has to make up the difference. And at this point in time, it's a 2.45% increase in taxes.
What was the total sales tax revenue for the whole year?
For 2020? Mm-hmm. I don't have that in front of me. And, and we're not at the end of the year anyhow, so...
But the last payment is late.
Uh, it was, it just came in and I think it was around the 145,000 dollars and change. Which is, I'm sorry?
That's for the third quarter?
That was it, yep. And we're, uh, down probably close to 20% on that.
Can I get that number?
You can pour it, pour it.
Okay.
We're not going to agree, Susan, I'm telling you.
That's fine, Mary. You and I do not have to personally agree.
You have, it's not a question of agreeing. These numbers are what they are. And your appropriations for the year, the total, highway and general and fire, is 1,824,108.
That is correct.
That's how much money we're going to spend.
That is correct, but then you have to reduce the...
All money I call is, stop talking about reductions. There's no need to talk about reductions. The revenue that we need to cover that, you're getting 889,149 from various sources. You're getting, raising in taxes, 836,710. Those two numbers together do not add up and cover the amount of money we're planning to spend. We are also going to spend the 98,249.
We're not spending it. It's being reduced. The taxes are being reduced by that.
No, they're not.
Yes, they are.
You're, you're raising 836,710. You're not reducing it by anything.
I don't agree to concede that we're going to continue to disagree. So we need to agree to disagree. But the point of the matter is, is this has been approved and, and discussed at length with the state. I'm not saying that your way of coming up with the figures is incorrect, but you need to concede that mine are not incorrect either.
The way that you're representing this, you keep talking about the 98,000 as reducing something.
It is.
It is not reducing.
It is.
You're raising 836,710. You're not reducing that by any normal.
Randy, take your appropriations, reduce it with your revenues, then take that number and then reduce it by the 98,249 and then you'll come up with the 836,710.
Does anybody here have any questions about what we're doing here? Because we're not going to agree on this.
The bottom line is that the taxes are going to be increased 2.45%. And you take, and does anybody wonder how we get to that number? So, yes, the, um...
Sue?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Has the 98,000 already been raised?
It was raised in last year.
It doesn't have to be appropriated again.
I'm sorry, what?
So it doesn't have to be appropriated again?
No.
It is in the bank.
It is.
Right.
It's in our reserve account, yes.
So that's why it's being reduced? Because it's already there?
It's not reducing anything. That, it's, it's not reducing the 836,710.
No, it's reducing the 1,824,108 after the revenue's been reduced.
The problem is, it was not available this year because it was reserved.
It had to be, yes.
And now it's being used to reduce taxes.
It had to be, yes. It has to be. According to the comptroller's office, you have to reduce it by the 98,249.
My understanding was last year when they wanted to take the 98,000 down to the highway, my understanding was that we would be receiving that back this year and it could be used for the purchase of a truck. And my, my further understanding was that basically my budget would change this year. The 98,000 would reduce it by, we would still raise that by taxes this year, but in addition to that, I would have that 98,000 that I had in the fund to be used for the purchase of a truck.
In 2021, you will have the 98,249. That is correct. That is a correct statement.
In January 21?
They can have it in January 21.
And the highway budget has not been reduced?
I haven't, from what you gave to, to me and what we went over it, it's not been reduced anymore than what you and I've gone over. You and I talked about the revenues for scrap, but if you don't think that that's necessary to reduce that, we don't have to reduce that. But that's, now is not where to reduce it.
My, my thing is, I just, I'm confused about how this is all, all, all working.
I will tell you honestly.
Because we have 100,000 in the one equipment fund, we have 77 in another, and I would mind out the 98 being brought back plus the 98 taxed, you know, not reducing the budget by the 98, but in addition to the 98, we want to change the budget.
Have you looked at this? Your numbers have not changed any.
No, I don't have that.
Oh, well, I think Deb does. But what I'm trying to say is, is the highway department is going to get back the 98,249 that is in reserve for you. But because it did not reduce the taxes last year, it has to reduce the taxes this year. And 2021 is this year right now, let me...
So, Pat, what, last year, your appropriations budget was 1,117,905. This year, in this preliminary budget, it is 1,195,432. That's a difference of 77,527. So your budget went up 77,527. The 98,000 is being shown in here as being money in your, the, the revenue sources for your, for the highway. I don't have the summary page for that. So...
Show me in the revenue side of the highway department where it is being mentioned. I'm on page six, highway fund revenue.
The, what's being mentioned at a point?
The 98,249.
It's in what, the summary page? You got it?
It's on the summary page, but it's not built into the revenues, no.
It's being used to reduce taxation.
That is correct.
So he's actually not getting the taxes he would normally have if he did use it to reduce it.
He is getting everything that you see in the budget plus the 98,249.
If we reduce that also...
It, it's just on paper. It's blocking where it reduces the taxes by 98,249. It's being reduced once. It's in reserve. The money is there for you.
Just to be reduced in the manner of taxes, aren't we really...
Losing it?
Losing it?
No, we're not.
Your budget's going up 77,527 from what it was last year, your appropriations. Um, your revenue last year... Um, your revenue, last year, highway tax, the raised in taxes last year was six hundred and forty-three thousand, one ninety-two. And this year, it's six forty-two, six seventy, plus the ninety-eight thousand, two forty-nine is in the summary table as going to the highway.
It's not a plus, it is a minus.
Is there a union contract already in place for this coming year?
No, no, and that has nothing to do with this at this point in time. It is not going to have to do with this. Those numbers count. Yes, they do.
You know, you can calculate the medical costs or the.
Yes, we can calculate the medical costs. We've gotten that information in already.
And so you know what the town's terribly?
Yes, we do.
And raises, you don't, you know that too?
Have a good idea.
And it's built into the budget?
Pat built it into the budget. Pat's been doing this for many, many years. So when he came in with his budget, he came in anticipating raising.
I didn't hear what you said in the beginning. Who, who?
Pat, Pat Wick has been doing this for many years, preparing budgets, doing, uh, wish lists and so forth and so on. So when he came in, he came in anticipating a, a certain amount to be raised in the, um, in the contract. He anticipated insurances. But he's also talked with us in, in our office to work out the insurance aspect of things. And if there was an error, we let him know.
So we already knew at all this?
No, I didn't, I didn't know.
He built in.
I just actually guessed because of the union contract, and I assumed that they, they may, they may possibly do a two percent tax increase. So that's what I did. But medical expenses and stuff like that, I had no clue because, and I didn't actually, I.
Well, you worked with my office and, and with Gail, and we worked out based on what we had from this year, did you not? Because you came over with figures.
No, I don't, I'm not a medical benefit specialist.
Right. Well, the medical benefits are based off of what we've had from this year and the anticipated increases. That we did work with the, um, insurance companies throughout it, at Lincoln, as well as for the union dues. Union dues, we've worked with them on.
I have no access to that information, it's part of my personal, so that's why I can't, I can't make an accurate estimate when I don't know what's going to happen.
Right, I understand that.
And the same with union contract. I'm just guessing, you know, gee, they may give a two percent tax increase. So that's what, that's what I did in my budget request, which is not the budget.
No, it's a request, it's a wish list.
Yes, exactly.
But we take what you have, and then we work with the different, um, like, the retirement system, the social security. We work with, um, uh, unemployment insurance, we work with disability insurance, we work with the medical insurance, we work with workers comp. We call these people and we ask them what they're anticipating. Is it going to be raised for next year? Is it not going to be raised? Is things going to be the same? And then they say, well, it'll be a two percent, or it'll be status quo, or what have you. And then depending upon what the gentleman take for, uh, insurance contacts, then, um, that's built in. So we're fine as far as all of the employee benefits are concerned from the highway department. And on the last page, you can see the salaries of the elected town officials. Does anybody have any other questions in regards to the budget itself?
Yes, I do. The medical insurance for the general fund is raised seven thousand, and we don't have any new, um, uh, no, no union contract for that, right?
No, there's no union contract in the general fund side.
So.
Pat has included in that insurance.
In the general fund?
Yes, he did.
Yes, so, okay. So the seven thousand, is that the percentage that was raised this year, or somebody else is getting insurance?
The, um, if Pat's getting insurance.
I can't hear you.
This year, two thousand and twenty, Pat's getting insurance, Susan Staples is getting insurance, and, uh, Gail Seaman is getting insurance.
Was that a resolution?
No, neither were Susan Staples.
And, but, didn't you say at the beginning of the year that she wasn't getting health insurance?
No, I did not. I said it was to be determined. It was to be determined.
One of the meetings, in the minutes, it says that Gail Seaman didn't get health insurance.
I don't believe I said she didn't. She was working, she was being hired at thirty hours a week at a salary. And at that point, she is entitled as an employee of the town, of the town to receive insurance.
What you did in January was say that she was a secretary going to become a bookkeeper once we paid four months paying somebody to teach it to her. Then also stated that she wasn't going to get the insurance.
If I stated that, I'm sorry.
That might change, you said it might change, but she's.
Well, it did change, and she is receiving it.
So it was under the table between you and not her?
Because I was already having a resolution to give it to her.
You didn't have a resolution to give one to Susan Staples either, Joan?
Yes, dude, there is. I'm a full-time elected official, and a full-time elected official is getting insurance.
I'm not going into that discussion at this point in time, thank you.
All right, I have a question. Do you have anything factored into the budget for lawsuits for next year?
No.
Okay, I feel like you should.
Well, thank you.
Because I'm pretty sure there's going to be one.
Thank you. Does anybody have any other questions about the current, uh, twenty-twenty-one budget? Sue, I'm sorry, yes?
Uh, I do the laboratory, this amount, two thousand, is that for testing of the town water here, or is that test the?
That's for, um, the highway, um, the highway department has testing done, and that has to come out of the general fund. I called to find out if it is transferred into the highway department, and I was informed by the state that it has to remain as a, um, general fund item. So we increased it because I got a list of charges or anticipated charges, what we could be charged from the, um, uh, the company that's going to be doing testing, and we wanted to make sure that we had sufficient monies in there.
Is that test of the wells, the town's wells, the water fineries?
The, the, yes, we can take some of that out of there, yes. But we also take some money out of the, um, um, where is it? Uh, Cedarwood charges, I've told someone that goes to Cedarwood, there, there, and, uh, that sort of thing.
And about the, um, program for the aging, is that the senior bus, that, that's the seven thousand, five hundred?
That is, yes. And that is not changing this year. I called and checked on that. What you will see an increase in on page five is personnel services for, um, this line of home community services. That is our wheels on wheels driver, and their rate just went up to twelve fifty an hour. And, uh, based on the hours that he works, we had to increase it. Yes.
Um, back to the insurance for the, uh, your secretary. You said before the coronavirus hit that she would not be getting insurance until you worked things out, Danny?
And it was worked out.
Well, evidently, there's some problems here where there was no resolution or anything like that. I don't want to go over that.
That's fine.
Uh, I think it's downright despicable with the way this person treated people on board, people that work here, other elected officials and so on and so forth, and then you can slide this under the carpet and give it to this person. I just think that's downright disgusting.
She's an employee of the town.
I don't care what you want to call her. I got some names for her too. Look, I won't go there.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you.
I just think it's downright despicable, the way you treated people, the way they treated people, the way she treated people over the years. And you do a political thing, you put her in a position, raise your pay and everything else, and then slide this health insurance right under the table and give it to her.
She is entitled by the state.
She is entitled to.
And federal law.
A path shoved in front of her.
Thank you. Do I have any more questions in regards to the budget? Yes, Mr. Gaddy?
I see you put in for the cemeteries.
Yes, we do every year.
Do you plan, do you plan on hiring someone to take care of it, or do you plan on giving that to the highway to take care of again?
It can go either way.
Pardon?
They can, they can go either way. If we're able to hire somebody to do the cemeteries, then we will do that. If we're not able to hire somebody to do it, then the highway department has been paid for the service in the past. They'll be paid for the service in the future.
I think that's really putting a lot on the highway department.
Thank you.
We've always, in the past, had a cemetery person.
Well, when you put ads out there and people don't come forth, and it comes time to have the cemetery's mowed, and we've got perhaps a funeral coming up or something like that. Pat and his men and women, women have very graciously gone and done the cemeteries, and we have paid them the money that we had, uh, towards, uh, the mowing.
Well, no, no offense to Pat, but the cemeteries were not well taken care of last year. And that's due to this town board not having a cemetery personnel, and you got money.
Not this town board, it was last year's town board. Let's make that clear.
It's pathetic.
The job has been put out there numerous times, and nobody wants it. Yeah, you threw people out the door.
Excuse me?
They let people go without paying them.
That's not true, this is.
I didn't say you. I said when this meeting was on the board.
And I can't believe that somebody that performed the job and turned in their paperwork was not paid.
No, they told them they weren't due.
Did they complete their jobs? They should have been paid for their jobs.
They weren't going to get paid.
I know nothing about that, and I would be straight up about that.
This meeting here, this one board, at that time, they were.
He is not in charge of the payroll. And if somebody had turned in the timesheet, they should have been paid for. No, that's just the way it is. If you've done a job and you turn in your, um, your timesheet, you need to be paid for it.
They told them not to come to work, so they didn't.
Well, you need to be paid for the job if you've done it, and then if you're let go, then that's a different story.
You can split hairs all day. They were told not to come to work. They weren't going to get paid.
I know nothing about that.
You sat here and this meeting was just like I did, and you didn't know anything about it?
But I didn't know anything about somebody.
I'm not saying you were the responsible person, I'm saying you knew about it.
I don't recall that at all, but I would say to you, if somebody was.
Well, then you have selected memories.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything to discuss in regards to the twenty-twenty budget?
I have one thing I have.
Pat?
Um, what's, what's the rate of pay? What were they, the last cemetery people had?
Um, I don't know what the last rate of pay was because it's been two years since, um, they were.
Minimum wage was, I believe.
What?
The minimum wage was at the time, I believe.
Yeah, but I don't know what, what it was two years ago.
And then they would get mileage too if they used their truck, I believe, or anything.
No, I mean, I think they got mine.
No?
It was just a straight pay.
No, they got mileage.
You know, they were paid a little bit, because, you know, people at McDonald's, you know, are making fifteen dollars an hour, and they want people to work in the cemetery for twelve dollars.
Twelve fifty, yeah.
Well, twelve fifty, you know, it's, it's not even reasonable nowadays, you know?
Well, we're having a hard enough time trying to get monies together to make this budget go. And, um, as much as I would like to be able to give everybody what they want, as I said before, we're in a revenue hole. Which means that we're not raising the revenues to cover the expenses.
Well, and that, that's why you're not getting employees too, you know what I'm saying? The, the people who aren't in, and we're, you're, we're in a revenue hole, we can afford to pay you, but I can afford to work for you for that either, you know what I'm saying? And, uh.
Thank you for applying. I'm very sorry if that's.
Four or five, we did the cemetery the first time, I mean, the budget ran out of money very early last year. When you calculate the time, the, the, my guys being paid, with three times doing the cemetery, that, that budget is wiped out. It's, it's just gone, you know?
But that's also something that I think that we need to look at going forward if we're not able to hire somebody to do, um, the cemeteries. I, I don't think we need to put your MEO on, and I'm not saying you did, but I don't think we need to look at putting the highest paid person on that job. We need to look at putting.
Well, sometimes the person who we have, you know, because in the beginning of the year, before Memorial Day, when you go over to do cemeteries, that's the worst time of the year. Camera cemetery is full of fine moves, fine moves. I mean, it's a lot of work. One person cannot do that. So we will usually do it first, and then they'll be outside the green, and, uh, yeah, we can get help or, um, you know, keep them routine to maintain. And we did the best we could this year, but then, you know, we had Reverend Berman pass away, the cemetery, and it was literally me and Jess that went up and did that cemetery by ourselves, and I think it's full of leaves and everything else, but with everything else going on, you just don't have a man out. You know, you know what I'm saying?
I understand that.
And I didn't promise to help them down this turn of the year, but it wouldn't.
Well, keep your ears to the ground. It's twelve fifty an hour, minimum wage. And it's not every week, you know, it's, you know, because there's, there's nine cemeteries that we have to maintain.
What, the, and, then this is a town thing, but, and I'm not trying to pick on you, but, but what does the cleaning guy, the volunteer who cleans the bathroom, give them that, what they get?
Well, he cleans the entire first floor.
Okay, what's he getting now?
I, it's not an hourly rate, it is a, um, a salary that's reached with the, um, most handy janitorial, I believe.
How many times a week do they come?
They come twice a week.
How much do you pay them?
Uh, it's, I think a hundred and forty-seven dollars, but don't quote me on that. I'd have to go upstairs and pull it in to let you know. No, we don't pay them a week, we pay them a month.
It's actually.
Unfortunate, no?
No, it's more than that.
No, it's a little, it's not.
Almost a hundred dollars a week.
How much?
It's almost a hundred dollars a week.
How much?
Almost a hundred dollars a week. I'm just going over this in a minute. It's, I came up the other night. Um, you had a bill that you discussed, it was three hundred and something dollars, and you said it was missing a holiday because we had a holiday. So it's close to over four hundred dollars a month that we pay them.
So probably a hundred dollars a week, so that's fifty dollars a day.
Now, he's, and he's, how long has he spent here a day?
He spends about two and a half hours here.
So he's getting fifty-something dollars an hour?
No, two and a half hours.
Well, twenty-eight dollars an hour, and we're, we're looking for cemetery people that, that twelve dollars an hour, minimum wage.
Twelve fifty, yeah.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry, you know, and I'm not trying to pick on you, but, you know, regular cemetery, all that, that shit away and all that stuff. It's a lot harder work than roaming the cloth over the bathroom, saying you're plugging the foot, you know?
And, and I just want to bring up also that at the town clerk's pay that you have is under minimum wage for that position. And that's ridiculous that you can give the other elected official a twenty percent raise almost, and then you have to.
What other elected officials have done a twenty percent raise?
Pat, you just gave Pat a twenty percent raise in the budget.
Pat is the only elected official who was getting a raise this year.
That's what I'm saying. You've given him a twenty percent raise, and I am making under minimum wage this year, this year coming up.
I can make the same deal, but I'm not going to. When I ran for this position, I knew what I was going to be making.
Well, I.
You knew the effort, you knew what to do.
I, I knew what I was going to be making, but when you're paying someone a salary, it's supposed to cover their wages. It's supposed to cover the hours they work.
Pat's here forty-eight hours a week. He's on the clock twenty-four seven.
I'm here thirty hours a week, and I also am on the clock twenty-four seven. Excuse me, Doug, I didn't hear you. Go ahead, repeat, I would love to hear it. I'm, I'm, I'm not surprised you won't repeat it.
Well, I'll say, I think he indicated that you're not here thirty hours a week during the week, Monday through Friday.
Correct, but I'm still working the thirty hours, whether they're here or at my house. I was working at my house at four-twenty this morning. I'm working over thirty hours, and I have been since I've been hired on this job.
Okay, that's fine, thank you.
And not only that, you're well aware of it, because you passed a resolution in August that proves that I'm working over thirty hours, and it had to be posted on the bulletin board for thirty days before it could be sent into the state. So that proves I'm working over those thirty hours.
You filled in the six oh today, you should have. I didn't fill that in.
No, but you passed it, you approved it, and you did not, it had to be posted on my board for thirty days for anyone to dispute it, and you did not dispute it.
That's fine, thank you. Do I have anybody else with any other questions in regards to the twenty-twenty-one budget?
I have a comment that I want to make.
Thank you.
So, anybody that wants the information can go to a website called Open Book New York. It's maintained by the. It's maintained by the Comptroller's Office. You can look at financial data for any town, county, school district in the state going back. I've got this back to, well, two thousand and ten, eleven doesn't have data, but back to two thousand and twelve. In here, they show you the tax levy limit and the calculation, the factors that go into it. And if you look down for twenty twenty-one, this is a number we were talking about earlier. The total tax levy limit, adjusted after you do all the other transfers and everything else, for this year or for twenty twenty-one is seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand and eighty dollars. That's the amount of tax revenue that we can raise in property taxes. That's what we're allowed to raise.
But we can.
Hold on, let me finish. We already have an excess levy from last year of ninety-eight thousand two hundred and forty-nine. So we have to subtract that from seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand and eighty dollars because we already have. That's what the comptroller has told us. There's guidance on it. There's tables that you can plug the numbers in and look at. That means that what we're allowed to raise in tax revenue in twenty twenty-one is six hundred and twenty-nine thousand eight hundred and thirty-one dollars.
Uh, excuse me?
Let, let me finish.
But the figures aren't right.
They, they are. This budget is proposing to raise eight hundred and thirty-six thousand seven hundred and ten dollars. That's a difference of two hundred and six thousand eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars. So we are exceeding the twenty twenty-one tax cap limit by two hundred and six thousand eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Anybody that doesn't trust these numbers, I would encourage you to call the comptroller's office to speak to them. I spoke to them and have emailed them numerous times. I wrote up exactly what my understanding was, what I just told you. I sent it back and I asked them if I had it correct and they said it appears, I understand. So I'm just telling you, the numbers are available on this website, Open Book New York. That's where the tax levy limit is and it's calculated.
Randy, the real property tax levy at the FYE, this is what you're ending twenty twenty, is eight hundred and twelve thousand eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars.
Yep, that's in here.
From that, you take the eighty-nine thousand two hundred and forty-nine dollars. From that, you've got the tax base growth factor which is one point zero zero three two percent. You've got the allowable levy growth factor which is one point zero one five six.
That's all I mean.
And you come up with a seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand eighty dollars. The ninety-eight thousand two hundred and forty-nine has already reduced it to come up with a seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand eighty dollars.
You have to deduct it again.
No, you do not.
Yes, you do.
No, you do not.
The comptroller told me to.
No, you do not.
Let me just explain, just so you, so you folks understand. The reason that you, we exceeded the tax cap by ninety-eight thousand two forty-nine last year, so to get down to the limit, you have to deduct that. That's to get to the limit. We already have that money in the bank. So you can only raise seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand eighty dollars, but we already have ninety-eight thousand two forty-nine in the bank. So you have to subtract that from what you're allowed, allowed to raise. The comptroller told me, she said it is confusing because it gets deducted twice. It gets deducted from what you actually raised last year. She went that much over the cap. And it gets deducted this year because you already have it in the bank. She explained it to me. I wrote it up. I sent it back to her. I said, this is what I understood you to tell me. She said, correct.
Yes, and I said in the beginning that what you said was not correct. Neither is what I'm saying. Because if you take the two hundred and six thousand eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars and deduct the ninety-eight thousand two hundred and forty-nine, that leaves us a hundred and eight thousand six hundred and thirty dollars. If we want to achieve the budget, which is bare bones that we've got at this point in time, we would have to increase our taxes this year for twenty twenty-one somewhere in the neighborhood of eighteen percent. All right? So what we're doing, and it's, it's legitimate and it's been approved by the comptroller's office and it is correct. To take it the way we have taken, I've taken it here. And it's been reduced once. You don't have to reduce it a second time. The money is coming back to the highway department. And you, you've come up with a tax rate of five point zero one and you deduct last year's tax rate of four point eight nine. And then you divide it by twelve, zero point one two, which is the difference, and you come up with two point four or five percent. So rather than raising the taxes approximately eighteen percent this year, we're going to raise the taxes two point four or five percent. Pat is going to be able to get his ninety-eight thousand two hundred and forty-nine dollars back, which he would get back anyhow. And they're able to look at making a purchase of a truck and whatever's necessary. They're band-aiding those trucks together to the.
I, I'm not disputing that. I'm, I'm on Pat's side and I want to raise money to buy equipment. What I don't want to do is mislead people about what we're doing.
We're not.
The two point five percent?
Two point four or five.
Two point four or five percent?
Mm-hmm.
That's over and above a number that was between sixteen and seventeen percent above the limit.
Eighteen point something last year.
It was between si.
It was eighteen point something last year.
It was sixteen percent on the tax rate. It was almost seventeen percent on the tax revenue.
Randy, if they had taken the, um, amount last year, and let's say they were successful and they had passed the tax cap levy last year and they had raised the ninety-eight thousand two hundred and forty-nine dollars, let's say that that was all done. This year, we've gone forward. We have done attended budget. We have passed the tax cap override. So we're capable of going over the limit on taxes, which is the proof thing to do in my opinion. And we're now raising the taxes two point four or five percent. Last year, if, because they didn't pass the tax cap override, they had to put the ninety-eight thousand two hundred and forty-nine dollars in a, a reserve account, which it was done. That money now has to be deducted from the anticipated, uh, appropriations minus the revenues to come up with the anticipated amount to be raised in taxes, which is what we have done.
Randy, do you have the chart that shows it gets subtracted twice with you today?
I do not have it filled out, no. It is.
There's a chart.
There is a chart in the state comptroller's, um, work book that you can look at.
And it subtracts it twice.
Yes, it does.
You don't have to do it that way, though.
There's, there's only one way to do it.
No, there's two ways to do it and that is what the comptroller's office is in demand.
Look, if you call the comptroller's office and you tell them what we're proposing to raise in taxes, the eight hundred and thirty-six thousand seven hundred and ten, and you ask them, if we did not pass, if we didn't pass the local law allowing us to override it, how much money would we have to put in a reserve account? And I can guarantee you, the number they're going to give you is two hundred and six thousand eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars because that's how much we're exceeding the tax levy limit.
But we have passed the tax cap override.
Right, so you, so that's how much you're exceeding, so you're exceeding the tax levy limit by that amount of money.
Yes, but how much are we raising the taxes based on that information? Two point four or five percent, which is the bottom line.
Over, over a number that was inflated last year because now you built that into.
It doesn't go away, Randy. Every year when your taxes go up or, or your taxes are due, you never lose the amount that you were taxed last year and that's unfortunate.
If you stayed within the tax levy limit, we would only be raising seven hundred and, seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand and eighty dollars.
They didn't stay within the year before. We unfortunately would not stay within it this year.
They, they have not exceeded the tax levy. Hold on. They exceeded it in twenty twenty. They have not exceeded it in two thousand nineteen.
Well, there was no limit in twenty twenty.
There, there was a limit.
They didn't, they didn't pass the tax cap.
There was a levy limit. It was seven hundred and fourteen thousand six hundred and ten dollars and they raised eight hundred and twelve thousand eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars.
Which accounts for ninety-eight thousand two hundred and forty-nine dollars.
What I'm telling you is they have not exceeded the levy limit in two thousand nineteen, in two thousand eighteen, in two thousand seventeen, in two thousand sixteen, in two thousand fifteen, in two thousand fourteen, in two thousand thirteen. They exceed, it appears that they exceeded it in two thousand twelve. That was the first time it was exceeded. I don't have data going back past that. So in twenty twenty, it's the first time since two thousand twelve we exceeded the tax levy limit and now we're going to do it again.
Yes, but we've covered ourselves by passing the tax cap override.
But that doesn't mean you're not exceeding.
And we have, and listen, with our revenues being down as much as they're being down, it's unfortunate, but somewhere it has to be made up and it's having to be made up unfortunately with the taxpayers at two point four or five percent. Does anybody in the audience have any additional questions in regards to the 2021 budget? Does anybody in the audience sit here and go out of line?
Yep.
Yes, Deb?
Okay, so revenue was down. I understand that that had a lot to do with some questionable doing concerning, uh, the handling of the assessors, the way they were treated. I think that had a lot to do with it. It was explained to us, uh, that, um.
No, that is not why I brought you here now.
It was explained to us that, uh, that if we didn't have the, uh, the personnel to properly assess things, that we were going to lose revenue. And it appears that because their wages were high and they didn't do their job the way they needed to, that we ended up losing money. Uh, we need to take some kind of measures to make sure that that kind of thing doesn't keep happening.
We have the same staff in there that we have had for years. The reason the revenues are down this year is because of the unfortunate pandemic that has occurred with COVID and the revenues have not been coming into the county and the county is the one who predominantly provides us with our revenues.
What your revenues are without their dollars?
We're talking about the sales taxes.
Mike Swan said sales taxes only down two percent this year.
All right. I'm telling you, it's not true.
It may be down more next year. I.
And he said.
Who's got Chris the wall? I don't.
Mike Swan, as well as the county, have indicated that it could take us as much as four years to recuperate from this pandemic.
It's not a whole pandemic.
What is it about, Deb?
It's about how people were unjustly treated before that, taking away the pay from some of our, from some of our finest, hardest working citizens, treating them like dirt. That's how it got started.
The pay rate, the assessor was getting twenty-two thousand dollars. The assessor, Mr. Birdsall, decided to split his pay with the clerk in that office. He says, baby.
That's because she was going to be caught.
That was his decision to split his pay, not mine, not yours, his decision.
He is very self-sacrificing and he shouldn't have had to be. He was saving the town's rear end because he's a good man. He shouldn't have had to do that. People made it necessary for him to make that hard decision.
Thank you. Thank you. Does anybody have any further discussion in regards to the 2021 budget going forward? No?
Anybody want to ask anything to Randy?
Anybody wants to ask me, I'll give them my phone number. You're welcome to call me or email me.
Thank you. All right, well, with that being said and nothing else coming from the floor, I adjourn the public hearing at this point in time.
Are you still doing the, uh, budget workshop on Monday?
Yes, we are at six thirty PM. And for everybody's information, the regular town board meeting is normally scheduled on the second Wednesday of the month. This year it happens to be a holiday, Veterans Day, and it has been moved to the twelfth, so it will be on Thursday evening, not Wednesday evening. All right? Thank you very much for coming out, everybody. Good try, Randy.
Paula, we missed you guys at the dinner yesterday.
What dinner? Oh, thank you. On the ninth. Yeah, probably, I'm not sure about the time.
December.
Yeah, December. All right, you know, ahead of time. Yeah, thank you. Yeah.
Yes, we, I think.